I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order and declare a quorum of seven trustees present. We'd like to welcome you to this meeting of College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interest of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is to access each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That is going to take us to item C1, recognitions. Mr. Martindale?
Thank you, Mr. Nugent and board members. We have Ms. Joshua Ryan here to introduce our students who are going to help us with our pledge and our moment of silence from summer day camp. I don't know whether Josh introduced you as a site director for summer day camp or assistant principal at College Station High School, so I'm a little thrown off with that. So my apologies. So Josh, you'll introduce our young people this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Okay, first, yes, like he said, I'm Joshua Ryan. I'm the site director at Pebble Creek Summer Day Camp as well as working at the high school. And then this is one of my partners, Kelly. I'll let her introduce herself.
My name is Kelly Mesa, and I'm the site director at Spring Creek Summer Day Camp, and I'm also the art teacher at Rock Prairie.
Okay. And we have two of our outstanding campers here. First of all, we have Ms. Stella Alvarez. She was one of our senior campers, and she is in seventh grade. And then we have Mr. Gage Hall. He is one of our junior campers, and he is in third grade. So let's do it. You guys ready? Come on, Mr. Gage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Remain standing for the moment of silence.
artwork that's in the back. It's a little bit different this month, but this is the artwork that was the welcome artwork for NTU, our new teachers university, and it's provided by district-wide student art clubs, and it's pretty cool. So check it out if you can before you leave. That's going to take us to D, our consent agenda. Items are going to be G, H1, H2, H3, J5, J6, J7, J8, J9, and J10. Are there any items that anyone would like pulled? All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. It's going to take us to E1, our board reports, announcements, and our superintendent report. I know it's the first day of school. Heard it was a great day for so many, but do we have? I know a lot of these folks have not met yet this, this school year, but do we have any reports?
I do. For Education Foundation, can y'all hear me over there? Okay, so Education Foundation did meet recently, and one of the things that they debuted to us are these awesome little flyers. The theme for this year is "Give Smore to Kids," and you know, I love this theme because I love anything to do with food. But anyways, this highlights what we've got going on, everything that Education Foundation does for our district. So this will be going out soon to people, and a little plug for them, anybody that wants to donate money is for a great cause, and Ms. Bendon is always accepting donations. Also, they recently went to, visited all 19 campuses and gave away about $56,000 back to the campuses, and this is part of the teacher giving program. So it's half of what they, what teachers donate, they give back to the campuses. Really cool program, and that shows just how much our teachers are even invested in our school district with their, with their money. The other thing is teacher grant applications are up. They are due October 1st. I think that's what my writing says, that they're up, and this year they are going to be awarding a quarter million dollars. So that's up from last year. So teachers get those applications, and we're excited to read those. All right, that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, you're standing. There we go.
I just wanted to capture a little bit as we started back with actually our teachers new to CSISD probably two weeks ago yesterday with our new, new teacher university. The number of teachers that are new to the district with zero years of experience are approximately 53. We welcomed right at 130 new teachers overall to the school district. We have approximately a little over 1,000 teachers. So it's a turnover rate of about 13%. State average is about 15, so 12 to 13 is where we traditionally are. But those folks came back two weeks in advance. Everyone else, our returning teachers, came back last week. Enrollment, as of, actually, this was earlier today. It may have changed a little bit. It's kind of moving throughout the course of the day right now, being the first day. It's 14,331. The enrollment for August 25th last year, because, let me mention this, we didn't have it for the first day last year in record. That's the first day that we, what we do is we go through, there are kiddos that are enrolled in the system but actually don't end up showing up or end up going to another district. That's why that 13,348 has an asterisk by it, because that's a cleanup number. So I would not anticipate us staying maybe at 14,331 when we do a cleanup, probably the end of this week, the first of next week. Typically, we see our enrollment dip a little bit. I would probably guesstimate it still stay in the 14-2s. And if you were listening to the two previous budget presentations that Ms. Strauss is giving this evening, she brought the budget off of 14,001, I believe. So we are beating that 3.2% that she's using in the budget thus far. But just know that number will continue to move throughout the course of the next several days. Our COVID dashboard was active, activated today because we'll update that daily for each day that we are in class. So today, we had two employee confirmed cases, obviously zero students, but again, they just returned. Our teachers returned several weeks ago, so I wouldn't have expected any student cases reported since there was their first day back. But our dashboard will update each school day. We turn our collective count in to TEA and Dishes every Monday for the preceding week. That's the reporting timeline for those entities. Our current COVID protocol, as we started the first day, just want to, I won't touch base on this a little bit, just to make everyone aware where that information is. Of course, when you pull up our website, you can see the banner at the bottom of our website, so folks can find that fairly quickly. This is the landing page when you come to that. It's difficult to read, but just this is what it will look like when you go there. At the top, there are two banners, the one to the left or the protocol. That goes directly to our eight-page protocols that's, that's listed there. What you see below this is more of a summary, and I'll touch on those things in just a minute. But that's the more comprehensive document, and of course, to the right is a link to the dashboard that I mentioned just on the previous slide. Our current protocol, of course, screening, and this is a huge piece, student and staff should self-check and screen prior to each day. Obviously, anyone experiencing symptoms should not come to work or school, and those folks or a student or staff that does report and displays symptoms later, as noted by the nurse, will be sent home accordingly. Promoting hygiene, this important part, is what occurs in school, and continue to encourage good hygiene among staff and students, reminding our kiddos, especially the little ones as they transition through the course of the day, to wash and use hand sanitizer that's available throughout our buildings. Sanitation, our, much of our building cleaning mirrors what we did last year, so our custodial staff will clean the high-touch areas throughout the course of the day. Our teachers have access also to the cleaner they used last year, and will also be misting or fuming rooms twice a week at each campus. And this is like we utilized last year that served us well. Positive case reporting and notifications. Of course, anytime we have a positive case, report it to the health district. That's daily, and as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we report to Dishes and TEA. That's the Monday of each week. We'll update the dashboard daily as well, and our current practice, again, as of today, is if, to provide email notification at the elementary level if there's a positive case in a homeroom. Isolation, this goes into much more detail in the more comprehensive document, but of course, we outline if there are, if there's a positive COVID, the 10-day quarantine, asymptomatic versus symptomatic, all, all of that is outlined, again, in the more comprehensive document. Vaccinations, of course, here, and recommended face covering and mask. Obviously, we recommend and support that. We do have the executive order that is in play as well with public ISDs. Virtual learning, we are not currently offering virtual learning. The state did not fund that in the last legislative session, so that's not a tool that we have available to us currently this year that was available last year. Quarantine and contact tracing, TEA doesn't require school districts to contact trace or individuals to quarantine that have come into close contact. That's different than last year as well, and now individuals do have the right to, as to whether they decide to quarantine or not if they are possibly a close contact. So that, all this is, goes into much more detail in our attached or linked COVID document, but I just wanted to take a minute and share with the group as to what we have currently. I know that I have a call with principals toward the end of the week, really as a check-in to see how things are going and get feedback from those folks at the campus level as to how, you know, how, how things are going. We'll continue to watch our cases as well. TEA calls are typically every other Thursday. That can always initiate some change really quickly as well. But this is currently what we have in place as we completed our first day. And then just some dates, there are many different activities occurring right now. We have tons of extracurriculars going on, and especially with schools starting up, the meetings that are listed in the board agenda, a number of those committees will start meeting again, but this is Leadership CSISD. You're all familiar with this. This is the game plan for the course of this year, the dates, the topics, and the location for the upcoming school year. So that's a, not the briefest superintendent update, but not the longest either, but I'll be happy to answer any questions at this moment.
So did you say with the Leadership CSISD, is there, are you still accepting applications or?
Mr. Man, are we still going or have we closed that out? Okay, there you go. Yes, we're still accepting.
We will be.
Plenty of room still, Ms. McAdams.
Okay, so I do have a question, and I'm 99.9% sure I know the answer to this. I hope I've been answering it correctly because I've been asked. We don't have any way of knowing what percentages of our campuses are vaccinated. Is that correct?
That's a correct statement.
Okay. So.
We, the, we do not know. If you recall in the spring, we held several, two, three days, I think, of vaccine, vaccine clinics, and that was our employees, and then later one for students as well that was a little bit later on. So when folks ask me regarding faculty and staff, what I can confidently say is they've been provided the opportunity.
Right. And then just for clarification, so do we have, do we have like a threshold for cases in classes?
Like we did prior year, last year?
Right. For shutting down?
We do not currently have that in place, no.
Not have that yet. Okay. And then the other question I had was in regards to if, if a child is sent home, you know, with a fever, COVID symptoms, are they, are they required to have a, a negative test to come back to school?
I'm going, I'm going to defer to my COVID expert on this one.
Thank you. No.
Within the mitigation and response plan, there is a section related to COVID-19 symptom guidelines with a flow chart. If a student or staff chooses to test and has a negative test within that window of five or more days after exposure, then they can return. If they choose not to test, but they were sent home with COVID symptoms, then they would need to follow the same protocol as if they had a positive case.
Okay.
What pages?
It's different.
Page, on, in our protocol, there's a nice flow chart that kind of works through that, and actually, I believe, Molly, we picked those up from Dr. Sullivan. Correct.
I have a couple of questions and some comments as well I want to share. First question, I, to clarify, Brian is doing masks on buses, but we have not, and they kind of indicated that that was a federal, I don't know if a federal requirement or, so what was our, the decision point there?
From the federal end on transportation, that's their interpretation. You have that, and you have the executive order. We are abiding by the executive order for the sake of not having two different standards going on as to what occurs in the building relative to buses.
Another question regarding, you mentioned that there are no requirements to really contact trace, right, from TEA. You mentioned that for elementary, we will notify families if there is a case?
Their homeroom, correct.
Their homeroom. Is there, why would that not extend to other grade levels? What was the thinking around that?
Well, we utilize the dashboard, obviously, then folks can tell at a particular campus. The reason at the secondary, because masks has always been a mitigating factor for us when we've used them previously. With kiddos with seven periods and moving through the course of the day, you, very well, we've had this conversation, sent an email to seven different classes for one student.
And I guess I'd argue that that would actually be more important to let, because there would be more potential exposure with that student. It might be even, you know, so more important that the students were aware that there was a, you know, a case in their, in their classroom.
And definitely something for us to look at, Ms. McAdams. This, day one, their protocol, then we can absolutely, as, as we experience things, look at adjustments.
And I'm glad we, I think the more information we can provide, I mean, if we are in a situation or, and that we are having families kind of make judgments and decisions for themselves, the more information that we can provide to them to help them do that, I feel like, the better. So I'm glad we are going back to the dashboard daily, but even, I mean, if there are cases, even more specifically in classrooms, I think would be meaningful information to families. Now, I guess my general comments, I need to go a little bit more on just, I feel like it's important that I share my beliefs on where we are with this right now, because I think none of us thought we would be here when we had our, certainly when we had our conversation back in May about, about what we thought was kind of the end of this, but things have changed, and that's why I really wanted this on the agenda for us to discuss, because I feel like it is our responsibility as a board to discuss and even possibly act to really ensure the protocols that, so our students can stay safe in our schools. Because, yes, we're in a tough, we're in a really tough situation that we've been put in, but again, I think that's why we're here, to make some tough, tough decisions sometimes. And I kind of feel like we have, as a board, I feel like we have like individually two tough decisions to make. One is, did we think the protocols we had in, in place last year worked and helped? And then if we say yes to that, which, which I do, then are we brave enough to put some of those protocols back in place to keep our kids safe, you know, this year? Because I think it's, it's scary out there right now, and you know, we're in a, the numbers show we are in a worse situation than we were a year, a year ago. And, and the, you know, I'm not a doctor, but the doctors recommend, both through, both the CDC and locally, our federal health authorities recommend that we be wearing masks unequivocally in, in school environments, you know, and, and masks are not perfect. We all know that. Students don't wear them perfectly, but the, the science really does show over, we have a year and a half of data, that they really do make a difference, but they really make a difference when everybody is wearing them. I mean, we, we hear all this thing, and we, and when the people who are ill are wearing them. And I really believe, I mean, I, I have a huge respect and belief in personal responsibility, personal choices, but this is a public school, and we are discussing individual actions that affect others. And I really believe it's our responsibility as a board to try, I mean, not to try, but to do everything we can to protect our students and our staff in our schools. And at this point, the data and all the evidence shows that we should be requiring masks in our school. And so, so that's kind of the first part of the question. Do I think our protocols worked and we should put them in place? I think yes. Then the second question is, you know, are we brave enough to try to do that in the face of where we are in our, in our state right now? And I also think yes, because I think the more districts who are willing to speak up, the more leaders in the communities that are willing to speak up, the safer that, that we'll be. And, and to me, that's just right where we are at this moment in time. I hope in a couple of weeks it changes and we could, and we could, you know, step back on that, but that's where I am right now. Thank you. I'd love to hear others' opinions.
So I also feel compelled to comment. I, for one, am closely following our local health authority, Dr. Seth Sullivan, and also, you know, I listened yesterday to the, to the update that he gave and Dr. Parsi and Mr. Jennings, and overwhelmingly, all three of them said that, that we need to be wearing masks, that, that they would like to see everyone showing up at schools wearing masks, and also that, you know, when we wear masks, when we all wear masks, we see decreased transmissions. And so I, I trust these guys, this is their job, to protect our public health, and, and I also see it as, as our part of keeping, the school district's part of keeping this community healthy. So I, I am closely listening to them, following them, and trusting their, their expertise, their training, and the evidence that they have and the recommendations that they're giving us. Thanks.
And I need just for point of clarity, for order on everything, feedback on the mitigation and response protocol, things notifying at the secondary level of those types of things are administrative functions, those are easy adjustments we can make internally. The conversation I hear occurring now, this is not an action item. It's not duly posted. If that's something that a board member requests through Mr. Nugent for future posting so that the appropriate wording and it's very clear to the public is being considered for action, would have to occur some other time than this evening. I just want to be perfectly clear to everyone on that one. So just, I want to make sure everyone understood that.
And, and I just want to add one thing to that, Mr. Martindale, that when, when it was requested, it was specifically said, there, no action needs to be needed, so.
And I completely understand that and was part of, you know, I, yes, but I just, I felt like I needed, I was compelled to, to let you guys hear my heart.
Comments on the superintendent's report? That will take us to item F, hearing of citizens. I would ask Ms. Horn typically if we have any, but I have three right here. Do we have any more? Okay, we have three. And.
Are these, are these like specifically people that have signed up?
Yes, sir.
Can we add some more?
Absolutely. Yeah, there are cards outside. If you could, they're, they will look a lot like this, and if y'all could simply fill that out and get it to Ms. Horn. All right, while they're doing that, I'm going to go ahead and start. Oh, yeah, I'm going to, I'll read it. Yes, I get to read this. Some ground rules as part of the Open Meetings Act. During this time, you know what, Mr. Martindale? I want them to hear it as well. Well, this is awkward, but it's important that they hear it. I'm going to look at my parliamentarian, requested to go back to superintendent's report because someone wants to talk about the first day of school. Go ahead. Sure, let's do it. We're being pretty lax across the board here.
Well, with everything going on, I didn't want to overshadow the first day of school for College Station ISD, y'all. Well, as you can see, we put 14,000 kids in our schools today. I was excited. I was out driving around and. I was excited, I was out driving around, and to see all the smiling faces and to see how excited these kids were, just made me happy. And I appreciate the district doing everything we can at this point, within the realm of where we're at. And our kiddos, they look to us, but they also look to us as parents, and I had my discussions with my family, and I'm very invested in this community, in this school district, and it was tough to have those conversations this week. But they were excited, and I was excited for them. And to get through August 17th today and hear about the days from not just my kids, but from friends of mine's kids, and how excited they were to be there, we did something right, and I'm gonna hang my hat on it, and hopefully hope for the best. So I wanted to, I did not want that to overshadow everything going on, that we put kids in the schools, teachers back in the schools, and we had fun today, and we got back to learning and fellowship. So I'm excited about that.
This was my first, first day of school in 19 years, not to have someone going, so it's good to hear. Okay, I did want to share the, kind of our ground rules as, as we abide by the Open Meetings Act, as we offer this time of, of hearing of citizens. During this time, public comments are welcome on non-agenda items, the board will listen, but the Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers. Please complete the note card, thank you, and give it to the executive assistant clerk to the board, Ms. Horn. The public comments are limited to three minutes per person, those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant clerk to the board will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board asks that those addressing the board refrain from derogatory comments. There we go. And, there we go.
You wanna take?
I'll take. We'll get this at the change. I want, I want to get this gentleman up here, I can't believe he is not tired of us by now. Our first speaker is Dr. Seth Sullivan. Oh, up here.
All right, thank you, thank you all, thank you to the board for the invitation here, thank you for everyone here. I am Seth Sullivan, I'm a Brazos County Health Authority, I am an infectious disease physician in the community, and I wanted to come here tonight really to give a background, give the understanding of what's happening in our community right now with COVID-19, what's happening in our hospitals, and what's happening in hospitals broadly in Texas. We're in the middle of a surge, this surge is made up of a Delta variant, this variant is comprising nearly 100% of the sequenced strains. This means that overwhelmingly, this Delta variant has taken over previous strains. We have been through Alpha, we've been through Beta, we've been on down the alphabet, as you can imagine. So what this strain is doing is that it is affecting more, and we're finding that it is more virulent. And the challenge is that it's more virulent in kids, challenge is that it's more virulent in young adults. We are seeing this in our hospitals, we're seeing 20, 30, 40-year-olds admitted to our hospital, admitted to our ICU, we did not see that to this degree in January, this is different. Every physician will tell you this, every physician who's in the ICU will tell you this, because this is the truth, this is what's happening. Unfortunately, our pediatric beds, our ICU beds are running low, very, very low. You read about this in the news, this is a fact. Talking to the chief medical officer at McLean's Pediatric Hospital, where many of our pediatric patients here, where our students would be admitted, they are at an all-time high of pediatric hospitalizations, currently 15% of their beds are right now taken up by COVID patients. The highest it got in January was three, 3%. This is different. Everybody, I, I think we need to be clear here about what we're dealing with. About 1% to 2% of kids currently with a case are gonna be requiring admission, that is nationally what we're seeing, and we're seeing that in Texas as well. 33% of those are gonna require ICU beds. I've already mentioned our ICU beds are short, part of that's an RSV wave that we're just getting through, and now we're coming into our COVID wave. Those ICU beds are not gonna be opening up anytime soon. Models show that unmasked 50 to 80% of our kids, especially the elementary campuses, are gonna acquire COVID, 50 to 80%, 1% of that, 1/3 of that. And what you very quickly get to are kids who need beds who don't have them. Nobody wants to be in that predicament. Temple, as I mentioned, is already busy, very busy. So we talk about personal responsibility, that is critical. So of our age-eligible kids, 12 to 18 years of age, who can get a vaccine right now, 19% in Brazos County, 19%. Of our 0 to 11-year-olds, it's 0% because there is no vaccine available to them. There is no choice for personal accountability for our 0 to 11-year-olds because they cannot get a vaccine. So this brings us to the practical considerations, background, that's science. What we did last year worked, it worked at a different time. That was not as virulent, that was not as transmissible of a strain, these are all true, but our masks did work. So what I'm asking is for a very difficult spot that everybody here is in, and I am very aware of how difficult of a spot this is. This is wow difficult, next level difficult, and I can appreciate your difficulty, I promise you. But I do recommend that masks be worn indoors K through 12, I recommend that bus, that kids on buses be wearing masks as well, and I recommend that we think about thresholds for where we need to have further mitigation factors, and I think that we watch what's happening with other schools very closely, and we're gonna see that happen. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. All right, Shante Smith. And also, if you could give your address as well, introduce yourself, and although I just told everybody your name and your address.
Well, thank you for pronouncing it correctly. I'm Shante Smith, address 2608 Sandalwood Court. I'm here tonight to ask for an easy administration action that y'all could make a decision on. Today, I'm asking y'all to maybe make a decision on virtual learning for students that have to quarantine. So by state requirement, 17 days is all a child can miss. If we're quarantined for 10 of those days, you can quickly see that kids are gonna be out of those requirements very quickly. Last year, my daughter was virtual for kindergarten in the first nine weeks, we felt she needed more classroom education, and so we put her back in the school, she had her mask on, all of those things. We then went through three quarantines once she went back into school. That would put us over those 17 days if this happens again this year. The online virtual learning that was full-time those first nine weeks was great, there was a teacher there, there were assignments, all of those things. Once we got back into the classroom and we had to do virtual learning, it, it was a little bit, there were maybe two questions each day that we had to click and answer, things like that. I'm asking y'all to, to really think about the education of our children in kindergarten, first grade, all the way up, that when they're out of school for 10-plus days, we're still giving them what they need to be educated. This Delta variant is even more contagious and easily spread, there will be quarantines, there's no doubt of that. I have a 15-month-old that's in daycare, she's been quarantined several times. Do I pull my other child out to protect those that aren't wearing masks at the school? Yes, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna do what's right, what doctors are telling us to do. The school board, y'all need to look at budgets, y'all need to look at how do we maybe see about virtual learning and create those for when a child is quarantined, not all the time, but when a child is quarantined so that they're not missing 17 days of school, 10-plus days of school, and not going against them. I stand by my choice to put my child in, I plan to do all of those things. This Delta variant, as Dr. Sullivan said, is very, very, 200% more transmissible. I'm not, you know, every person in here 12 and older has the right to a vaccine, my six-year-old does not. When the vaccine's available, I will be there to get her because I trust science, and I trust the doctors, and I trust the Lord. I, I truly do believe in that. Governor Abbott right now has COVID, he's getting, he had the vaccine, he's getting all of these different treatments right now that are out there. A six-year-old, anybody under 12, does not have that option. What are the ramifications of this long-term? We don't know. When mumps was out there, guess what? 50% of people that had mumps, males, ended up infertile down the road. We didn't know that at the time, but science later on showed us that. What are the repercussions of COVID in our kids? We don't know, we don't have that, it's been here for 22 months. I'm asking for us to protect our students, to give me as a parent that choice, that if my child in daycare needs to quarantine, I can give her a quarantine.
Dr. Reagan Larson.
Hi there, I'm Dr. Reagan Larson, 1-879-8-KIWA-CO, College Station, 77845. So I am a board-certified pediatrician, I'm currently practicing at Texas A&amp;M Student Health Services, and as Dr. Sullivan said, Delta is changing the game. I'm here because I know you guys' hands are tied right now, but as soon as they're untied, I really encourage masking in the schools. Delta, we're seeing increased pediatric hospitalizations, ICU admissions, ventilation. We don't know if there's gonna be increased pediatric deaths yet, but even one pediatric death is too many, and we are concerned that we're gonna see increased cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome, or MECE. We're also concerned about long COVID in kids, as we have seen in adults, which could affect their ability to learn, their energy levels. The AAP has put a recommendation or a statement saying, these kids cannot be protected by the vaccine yet, we have to do what we can to protect them, and the only thing that we have to offer them is universal masking. The masks, as we all know, it's, yes, it's your choice to wear a mask, but your mask protects me from you, and my mask protects you from me. So I sent my fifth grader today in a mask, but if the child next to her is unmasked, had Delta, and coughed, she was exposed. So, you know, I, I, I just think that we've got to be protecting these kids, these, you know, if one, five kids came today to school with Delta, they possibly infected up to nine other kids. So in one to two weeks, we're gonna have 45 kids out of school for two weeks, and some of them may even be hospitalized. So this is not just about their health, but also their education. Again, I know your hands are being tied by our state government right now, but as soon as possible, I think we need to step up and protect these kids because they don't have that choice of vaccine like we do. So that's my two cents, I really strongly encourage you guys to please protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Johnson.
Matthew Johnson, 4411 Woodland Ridge Drive, 77845. My name is Matthew Johnson, I'm an eighth grader student at AMCMS. The counselors and the principals at my school have always said it's their job to protect us so that we can learn in a safe environment. This year, they can't do that. To have a safe learning environment, you have to have a school board and a superintendent who are willing to take the, the necessary precautions to make the environment safe. In this case, those precautions would be to require masks and social distancing at CSISD schools. One of the many benefits of wearing masks at schools is that you don't give people the choice to make a bad decision about their health and the health of others. Please require masks at my school, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Michelle Johnson.
Hello, I am Michelle Johnson, 4411 Woodland Ridge Drive, and I'm just the oldest of my three boys, Matthew, and I have two other children at Oakwood and at South Noe Elementary. And on this very first day of school, CSISD, and in light of the current pandemic we are in, I just want to remind each of us in CSISD of the CSISD mission, which was stated earlier, success each life, each day, each hour, and also the CSISD vision, all learners in CSISD will be afforded real-world, challenging, authentic experiences that develop their creativity, confidence, and competence in a safe and healthy learning environment that celebrates diversity through meaningful relationships. Together as a community, we will work to prepare our students to meet the needs of their future success. Each life, each day, each hour. Sadly, without a mask requirement, you have decided to allow the increased potential for spread of COVID-19 at every building to unvaccinated minors each day, each hour, and each minute for the 174 days they are mandated to be in school. Board, it is your job, and superintendent, it is your job, to create the policies and procedures based on the current best practices for the safety of our children, and it is our job as parents, it's our job to support that, to support you creating those policies and procedures for all of our children's safety. Please make the CSISD COVID-19 policies more safe for this school year by following all of the doctors, Dr. Sullivan's and the other doctors' recommendations for wearing, requiring masks, and, and expecting our community to work together to stop this global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Shayla Yeh.
Hello, I'm Shayla Yeh, 4407 Woodland Ridge Drive. I have an 11th grader at Consol and an 8th grader at AMCMS, and I really don't want to say everything that everyone else has said, but I so much agree with what our board members, Mrs. McAdams and Mrs. Nolan, the questions that they asked, the things that they stated. I so appreciate Dr. Sullivan being here today and sharing what we all know, and for me, that first day of school, again, very exciting, I was so excited to send my kids back today because we kept them home last year, it was best for our family, and we felt it was best for our community. We were gonna do our part to, to, you know, get over this, and we watched every day what was happening at school, and we were very impressed with the, the lack of spread and how people were safe, and we're very hopeful that that was gonna be the case this year. My kids, it was a big sacrifice to stay home. Thank you to everybody who made virtual learning happen, and the principals heard from me a lot, and the teachers heard from my kids a lot, but you know, they made it through, and I think a lot of great things came out of it, but they want to be back at school this year. And at this rate, I don't think that's gonna happen, I think pretty soon, we're gonna be home. I think that, I know that your hands are tied with funding, I know other school districts are doing something about that, and I think it's worth, I think our kids are worth fighting for, I think that if we are not wearing masks, I don't see how there's gonna be funding for educating our kids, because they're not gonna be home, and you're not gonna be, or not gonna be at school, and you're not gonna be getting money. So I feel like if a change does not come from the governor soon, that I really hope that you will all make that brave choice and fight for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayla. Robert Wilson.
My name's Robert Wilson, 8419 Torrock Loop, here in College Station. I really can't say anything more than what the doctors have said, obviously, they are more versed in this topic than I am. I do wonder why other school districts in Texas are making the decisions to require a mask mandate, I thought about it, it's like, maybe it's related to funding, maybe if the state doesn't kick in the ADA funding, you know, the average daily attendance money that you get from the state, they waived that last year, I believe. If they don't waive it this year, you're costing the district in excess of over $500,000 just in the kids not being here, the attendance money that you lose in that. And so, aside from... And so, aside from all of the health reasons, there are, you know, there's financial reasons involved in this as well. And I, you know, I can understand Dallas ISD, Houston ISD, I mean, they're three, four, five, six times our size. I mean, they're, they have the potential to lose millions of dollars. If it spreads the way that it, if COVID spreads this year, like it did for College Station ISD last year, you're in excess of over, you're losing over $500,000. I did those calculations. If it's worse, then you're approaching 3/4 of a million, a million dollars. I mean, it seems like a wise fiscal decision to require masks, not just for the health reasons. I'm for the health reasons, don't get me wrong, okay? But, you know, the financial aspect of this too, I mean, it's, it's a double-edged sword. And I get the position that you're in, and I don't want to be in your position, okay? But you can't depend on the state to make those decisions for you. You have to regain your local control and do what's best for our kids. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Hello, my name is Maddy Wilson of 8419 Turtle Rock Loop, College Station, Texas. I am a junior at A&amp;M Consolidated, and I'm actually Kinsol's junior class president, which is a position I really don't take very lightly. And what I also have as a part of me is the fact that I've spent the last 525 days at my house with my lovely family, of which you just met my father. And it has been an amazing 525 days, but as you can imagine, I was very excited to be able to drive myself to school this morning and get out of my house. But in that, I didn't take into the consideration that the school's Wi-Fi wasn't really allowing me to send texts through to my parents. So I went through the entire school day with sending two texts to my mom. And after spending 525 days together, that was not adequate. Luckily, we were able to really decide as a family that I felt really comfortable going back to school, and so it wasn't as scary as it was for a lot of families this morning, sending their child going off. And I have two very important reasons why I was better prepared than more than half of the students in CSISD. And that's the fact that I'm able to be fully vaccinated, which is something that all children under 12 are unable to do right now. Now, if I was in the position where I was five years younger, we, my family and I would be going through a very different time right now. Those 525 days probably wouldn't have ended, and I probably honestly would not be able to go to a CSISD school, considering the fact that I, that masks are not mandated, and I would not feel safe. And what I keep thinking about are the hundreds of families who sent their kids off to school this morning, who were unable to get in contact with them, the same way my mom only got two texts from me, who were worrying about, is my kid being bullied because they're wearing a mask? Is my kid wearing their mask adequately? Are that my, are her teachers going to be able to support my child in wearing a mask, or are they going to discourage it? Are my children's teachers vaccinated? How can I safely figure, can I come to terms with the fact that there's a very large majority of adults at, in CSISD who are not fully vaccinated? How are we going to be able to handle that? The reason that we ask you to mandate masks is not necessarily for the 500 kids who I'm responsible for, for the junior class. It is, but it's mostly for those children who are completely unable to be vaccinated and have no, nothing protecting them in our schools. If this was any other problem than a two, like, couple of inches of cloth on our face, this problem would have been solved months ago. But sadly, there are hundreds of families who no longer feel safe in our CSISD schools. And quite honestly, that falls to y'all. There's nobody else to handle it. So I just ask you that you mandate masks in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddy.
Hi, my name is Julie Wilson, and I also live at 8419 Turtle Rock Loop. And I specifically wore this shirt today because it says, "Speak up because of the day that you don't speak up for what truly matters is the day that freedom truly ends." And what my daughter didn't mention is that she has a very rare autoimmune disease and is required to have monthly infusions. And so she is immunosuppressed from her medication, and she is also, you know, at very high risk because of her disease. And last year, we had to make the decision to keep her home, and so we were parenting a teenager during a global pandemic in a situation where she was completely isolated. And obviously, as you can see, she's a very extroverted, very extracurricularly active child, and having to make that decision was really difficult. And we faced constantly having to choose between her physical health and her mental health. And last year, we put a lot of emphasis on her physical health because of the fact that she was unable to be vaccinated. But we really felt like once she was vaccinated, that we, you know, would be done. But unfortunately, Delta has made that not be completely true. We are on Saturday going to get her the third dose of the vaccine that she qualifies for, but as she mentioned, she is old enough to have that as an option. And I can tell you from a parent perspective, wrestling with the decision about whether we had to stop her from being junior class president, from being a bingle bell, from being treasurer of the varsity debate team, and being in all of the AP classes that she wants to be a part of so that she can continue in what her plans are once she graduates, or keep her home and homeschooler in some capacity for her, her, her physical health, is a very, very, very difficult decision to make. And as Maddy stated, there are parents all across this district that are wrestling with similar decisions, and it's hard enough being a parent in normal times. And so I just really feel very strongly that an easy, easy fix is mandating the masks again, and going back to the protocols that did work very well last year. And I completely agree with what Shayla said because I was very doom and gloom at the beginning of the last school year, and that's why we chose to keep Maddy home, but we were pleasantly surprised all year that things did not as much as we feared. But with the Delta variant and with as contagious as it is, that's going to not be able to be mitigated as, as well as it was last year, and it's especially not going to be able if we don't mandate masks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I, I'll be real honest, I felt really good about how I have nailed these names tonight. And then I get to this, and so just my apologies in advance, but I'm going to give it a shot. Bronius Morikaitis?
It is just like being in elementary school.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. How bad was it?
That was beautiful.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, thank you, Board. No, seriously, it feels like, this is where I grew up, this is my hometown, and I'm Bronius Morikaitis. I'm 1101 Crested Point Court. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. I grew up here, I'm class of '94 from Kinsol. I see Ms. Hester back here. Yeah, there's nothing I'm going to say that you hadn't heard, so what I'd like to do is go off the script just a little bit. How much time do I have left? Okay. I want to talk about communication and messaging. The message we are hearing as parents is one of disconcern, and I know it's not the case. I served on the, one of the zoning committee, rezoning committee boards here, and that, yeah, there's a lot of things that the board deals with here that parents don't ever see. We see what we see, we talk to each other, and we can rile each other up very well. I don't know what pressures y'all are dealing with, but the messages that we're seeing doesn't sound like concern. We can do really simple things, just change our wording a little bit, say, hey, we're in a pandemic, it's a worldwide pandemic, and College Station is not an exception just because of all the various reasons. So we can recognize that, and we can do things like personally choose to wear a mask when we're out in public or, you know, enclosed spaces. I choose to wear masks, my family masks, and it's not for us necessarily. We're vaccinated, all of us, except our littlest, he's actually our main reason for being here today. But we do it for the others who are not following CDC guidelines as closely. We do it for others who aren't really watching updates or listening to Dr. Sullivan on the KBTX. We do this for the other people who aren't as concerned, because we want this thing to be behind us. We also, we did virtual school for as long as it was offered here. The kids were more than excited to get back to school, and, but that wouldn't be possible if we didn't have school in session. We're a little bit concerned that school is going to be out of session pretty soon here. I think there are two school districts in Texas now that have already closed, they obviously started a little sooner than we did. Ira Anne is one of them, I don't know the other one. I guess there'll be more examples pretty soon here. And on the theme of messaging, I would like us to consider, is College Station going to be, you know, reactionary and be a statistic, or can we be forward-thinking? Can we be preventative? Can we be an example to other school districts? We're always saying our hands are tied, our hands are tied, and Ms. Johnson talked about, you know, is that funding, or is it, you know, whatever the reasons are, why do we say our hands are tied? But there are things we can do, we don't have to necessarily mandate, but we can change our wording, we can change our attitude. A little tiny thing, Mr. Martindale, was, you used something, so I reviewed the COVID protocols here, and it's changed over the past couple of weeks. The first version of the protocols said, the first version of the protocols said, well, it's out there, yeah. It said, oh, it'll say, our protocols are going to be largely like they were last year. It didn't say protocols, it said, basically, we're going to be back to normal is what I read. A later revision said, you know, here's the specific things, but that wording was gone. But this evening, you said that masks are strongly encouraged. That's not on the documentation. So let's just change, if we could, our wording and our attitude, and if we can form an emergency committee out of the normal routine of board meetings, I'm happy to serve on that committee. I know a lot of parents here, we're all connected with a lot of people who are concerned, and I'd love to speak to other people who aren't so concerned as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I would like to thank everyone who came to speak tonight for your candor and, and for your attitudes and your concern. Thank you very much. It's going to move us to personnel. I want consideration, discussion, and possible action to charter a committee for the purpose of evaluating employee healthcare options in the 2022, '23 plan year and beyond. Mr. Martindale.
Yes, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Nugent, members of the board. As you heard in the workshop, workshop session earlier this evening, the passage of Senate Bill 1444 in the most recent legislative session has provided new opportunities for school districts across the state who are interested in, in joining or perhaps leaving TRS active care. And here in College Station ISD, we are very interested in pursuing whether or not this might be the best option for our employees across the district. On the agenda this evening, we have for you some consideration to charter an ad hoc committee to explore these options. As mentioned earlier, we do have a timeline for notification to TRS should we choose to leave the active care session, active care system. That timeline would be at the end of December 2021 if we are interested in pursuing other options for the '22, '23 plan year. On the committee charter, you'll find a proposed timeline that includes committee meetings throughout the early fall, and then an update to the Board of Trustees, and finally, should the committee make that recommendation to the Board of Trustees, we would be considering that no later than at the regular meeting in December. Also attached to that charter, you will find committee membership. We have proposed a committee that includes a wide variety of employees from not only geographically diverse locations across the district, but also very different positions within the district, and those individuals make up all of the different types of healthcare plans so that we'll have good representation on that committee with experience in the different plan types that we currently offer here in College Station ISD. And with that, it is my recommendation that the board consider chartering this committee to explore healthcare options for CSISD employees.
Do we have any questions, comments?
I'll move that we charter the committee as presented to look into potentially other options beside TRS.
I'll second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
One quick comment, and I think we have, we're lucky to have the right board member on the, on the list there. Thank you, Mr. Horak.
No pressure. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. It's going to take us to I two, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to a resolution regarding the extension of employee leave provisions related to COVID-19. Mr. Martindale.
Ready for this? Ms. Perry.
The COVID expert.
Thank you, gentlemen. As you may recall, last fall, at the federal level, the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act was passed, and that provided for leave under certain circumstances above and beyond what is already extended to all of our employees here in College Station ISD. The provisions of that federal act did expire on December 31 of 2020. However, the board with our recommendation did extend those provisions through June 30th, 2021. While we were hopeful that this would not be a continued need with the recent resurgence of COVID-19 cases in our community, we do want to make sure that our employees who are directly impacted, impacted by a diagnosis of COVID for themselves as well as their immediate family, when they need to care for those individuals, have that additional leave time available to them. This recommendation is somewhat more restrictive than the original provisions. It does not include time for quarantine, but it does continue providing that opportunity for the additional days when isolation is required for the employee or their family member that they need to care for. I would like to mention that this does not provide additional days above and beyond what was originally extended, so those employees that have exhausted those benefits are not eligible for more days. However, our new employees would be extended the 10 days that all employees had at the beginning of the last school year. This extension is recommended through December 31, 2021, and of course, should we need, we would reevaluate at that time any potential further extensions.
Molly, let me, and you may have said it, and I missed it, but for, you said for new employees, but it's current employees too that have not utilized the sleeve.
Exactly.
Okay.
All current employees who have not exhausted the sleeve.
And pending board approval, this, we would make this retroactive to July 1st.
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments on this? We'll need a motion to take action as an action item tonight.
I move to accept as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. It's going to take us to J one, consider approval of the school district budget for the general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition fund for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2022. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
I wonder who we're going to see here.
Third time's a charm. So we kind of heard about this from Ms. Straus, well, we have been since March.
Kind of.
Earlier at workshop, and again, at our public hearing. So we're here filing for, seeking approval for the 21, '22 budget. So, Ms. Straus.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, I appreciate it. So just to kind of go over a few things, budget and tax rate adoption requirements, as mentioned before, the annual budget must be proposed to the Board of Trustees by August 20th and adopted by August 31st, so I think we're taking care of that one tonight. The budget must be adopted at a minimum of the, of the function level and includes the general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition fund, all of which are presented to you tonight. Public hearing on the budget and tax rate was published and held earlier this evening prior to this meeting. A summary of the budget was posted on the district's website at the same time as the notice of the public hearing was in the newspaper and on the website. And the final budget will be posted on the district's website after tonight as required, and the final budget will be filed with TEA, and that is around October is the deadline for that. for that. The budget assumptions, enrollment grows budgeted at 3.2% growth, so enrollment is 14,101. Average daily attendance, of course, we have absences is 13,160. And our weighted average daily attendance is 16,872. Property value growth is 4.11. Those are all of the factors that have to go into budgeting revenue as well as expenses for staffing and those sorts of things. So the proposed budget that is presented to you tonight is at the function level. It has proposed revenues for the general fund of $124,735,272. I mean, $272. Debt service fund, $29,525,000. Child nutrition, $7,246,545. For a total of $161,506,817. These numbers are starting to run together. The appropriations for the debt service fund and child nutrition fund are equal to that of revenue for a balanced budget. And the appropriations for the general fund are $127,644,303. So the net effect for the general fund is that appropriations are proposed to exceed revenue by $2,909,31. So as mentioned before, we do have plans for addressing that deficit or at least monitoring it. So in 22-23, if we have the same enrollment with a 2% property value growth, the total revenue should increase by approximately 2.6 million. This is because the state funding formula changes the second year of the biennium and you get more money on a regular basis.
Amy, what's the per capita in the second biennium?
400, and it's 200 in the first.
Okay.
Okay.
And so for each child, it's 400 per capita as opposed to the first year and in addition, any additional enrollment.
Correct.
Correct?
Right. So then we'll monitor our enrollment. We really need to get through the first six weeks to know that. But we also have to estimate attendance, which I realize will be a little bit difficult. But depending on that enrollment, if we can bring an amendment to you with some adjusted revenues, we will do that. We also have S R two funds that are available. We don't know the dollar amount yet because if you'll recall, it's about 5.8 million, but they're going to offset that by what the state utilized to hold districts harmless this past year. So those calculations will hopefully be made available in September. And we will propose using those, of course, as allowed, but also in the best interest of the district and our students. We'll continue to review staffing efficiencies as well as other expenses throughout the year to try to lower that $2.9 million. So highlighted some of the additions that are in that general fund budget was the compensation plan that was previously approved that increased beginning teacher pay from $45,500 to $47,000. And I'm sorry, what's missing on there? And I thought I added it was at least a minimum of a $1,000 increase for returning teachers as from the last year's base pay, a one and a half percent pay increase from midpoints for all the other pay groups. That'd be administrative, paraprofessional, and auxiliary, and an increase in the employer contributions to most of our healthcare plans. Additional positions were in the budget for special education and pre-kindergarten as well as some inflation in very select areas such as utilities and property and casualty And that is the budget in summary. It is attached. There's also some supplementary information there for you that's got more details. That's not part of the adopted budget, but is there for your information to help explain some of the items. And I'll entertain any questions.
No, and a later agenda item, the board's considering our insurance, our property insurance. That's accounted for in this proposed budget.
Yes, sir. It is.
I move to accept the budget as presented.
I second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. After months and months of discussion, are there any questions or comments? All right. All in favor.
Can I just say real quickly, first, a big thanks for all the work of, obviously, through the district that goes into this and the many iterations. I personally am glad that despite having a deficit budget, that we were able to do the compensation items that you have put here. Our teachers worked super hard this last year. I mean, they always do, but particularly over this last year. So I think I definitely support the budget as presented. Thanks.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Budget passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. Takes us to J two, consider approval of a resolution adopting the 2021 tax rate for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Need tax rate to support the budget. Pay attention, this one's tricky.
This one's tricky.
Correct, Ms. Strauss, the wording.
And for those of you who will be hearing this for the third time tonight, you could probably present just as well as I could. But we do want to go over it again because our audiences have changed. So I apologize for those that are hearing it multiple times. But the proposed tax rate for the year for 21-22 for the maintenance and operations side that supports our general fund is 95.22 cents compared to the tax rate we have for our current fiscal year of 96.6 cents. That is a decline of 1.38 cents. All of that is because of our property value growth and the required compression, tax rate compression. For the debt service side, we're proposing to retain the tax rate we had in the previous year of 26.3 cents. And just, you know, as a little history, back to 2017-18, when the tax rate was $1.398, we have declined by a little over 18 cents or 13% for our taxpayers. Much of that was House Bill 3. So the motion that's being presented tonight for you is based on the total tax rate. So that is both INS and MNO or the maintenance and operations. So we talked about that tax rate decline of 1.38 cents, but what we have to do is compare it to that no new revenue rate, which we've heard before. The no new revenue rate is when you look at property values this year, the same properties that were here last year. So no new growth, no new construction. And what tax rate would it take to generate the same revenue? And if that is higher than the proposed rate tonight for both MNO and INS, then we must say that it is a tax rate increase and we must provide that percentage. And so the no new revenue rate is calculated at $1.1869, and we're proposing $1.2152. So that would be an increase on the no new revenue rate. And I have to be very specific, that language has got to be exactly as written. Then we have the resolution, which is even a little bit more confusing because it's attachment to this. But in this one, you're still, the resolution refers to both the MNO and INS rate for a total. It's listed separately. But when you talk, you refer to the no new revenue rate, it is only on the maintenance and operations side. It excludes debt service. So in this instance, the percentage is 2.65% instead of that over 3% that we just referenced. We also must put in the resolution the effect on $100,000 home. So I said, this is the confusing part. Same documents, but two different percentages put here. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
So at the end of all the confusing language, the ultimate bottom line is we're reducing the total tax rate by 1.38 cents.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Actual rate between the two years is a decline.
Do we have any questions or comments on the tax rate? Or the resolution? That's probably a better way to phrase it.
Thank you for clarifying first that the tax rate is going down. But I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a total tax rate of $1.2152, of which 95.22 cents is for maintenance and operations and 26.3 cents for debt service, which is effectively 3.56% increase in the tax rate. Do I write?
Yes. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Strauss. We may not be done just yet, huh?
I'm not done just yet.
J three, consider approval of a resolution for the designation of committed fund balance for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2021. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent and board members. We need board action to move some previously committed fund balance to uncommitted with additional details on the dollar amount. Ms. Strauss.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Martindale. So part of the balance sheet for the district has what we call fund balance, and there's five different classifications. Of that, there is one that's called committed, and that particular designation is controlled by the board and must take board action to change it, to either increase or decrease it. So that's what we're here tonight. We have a commitment of fund balance, a total of $12 million currently, $8 million for what we call future construction and construction-related items, and $4 million for potential land purchases. So that's what's there now. We really had, it goes back to 2011 when the designations were a little bit higher. And then last year, we did, board action lowered it to this total of $12 million. The unassigned fund balance is that fund balance that can be utilized for the district for general operations. And that is the part that we would utilize for the $2.9 million general fund where appropriations at this point is budgeted to exceed. So in looking at that, there's a lot of considerations. There's a financial rating system that measures that unassigned fund balance. So I feel like in the best, it's in the best interest of the district to undesignate a portion of that. So that's what the resolution does. And you have to realize, when it was presented in 2011, there were reasons why we wanted those designations. They were looking at, the state was looking at unassigned fund balances in districts that they felt were too high. So that's why in 2011, these things were established. So the resolution that's presented is requesting that the construction and construction-related fund balance be reduced to $5 million and the future land purchase remain at $4 million. So that would be a total of $9 million, a reduction of three from where we are currently that would cover that $2.9 million. This would be effective for the audited financials that end this current year, 8/31/2021. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions or comments on this? Rolling through it. Okay, we need a motion.
I move to accept as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Takes us to J four, consider approval of the contract renewal for property, casualty, and general liability and auto insurance for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Here with additional information is Ms. Strauss.
Surprise.
Ms. Strauss.
Surprise. Thank you again. So annually, we look at our insurance coverages and look for renewals. We are fortunate to have ANCO Insurance solicit proposals on our behalf as well as make recommendations of their professional opinion, what is best for College Station ISD. So this year, because of, I think, a lot of volatility, not just statewide, nationwide, but also within College Station ISD, we were anticipating some very high increases, and that did unfortunately materialize. ANCO reached out to a total of 59 various markets on our behalf, trying to research the best options for us. And what it came down to is they're making a recommendation to use a layered program, which we have done previously. In that layered program, several companies may be insuring the district for various levels and amounts so that not one carrier is on the hook for the whole thing. So that's very important. We've had that layered program for many years. It's what a lot of their large commercial customers use as well as school districts to get the best rates. So the proposal made by, the recommendation made by ANCO was for College Station ISD to renew coverage for 21-22 with Axis Lexington-Berkshire for the layered program, AIG for the school leaders liability coverage, Travelers for the commercial auto coverage and general liability, and Midcontinent Insurance for the underground storage tank liability coverage. One of the biggest changes in the policy this year is that previously, we've been for wind and hail under a deductible plan where as we had 250,000 per location, 500,000 per occurrence. And really, last year, a lot of the markets were moving to a percentage of the covered insured value. We were fortunate to be able to retain the 250, 500,000 last year, but we knew that that was probably coming to an end, and unfortunately, it did. So the policy for wind and hail under these proposals is 2% of the insured value. So that is a very big change in the program. But the renewal amount, when you add all of the policies together, 1,674,338. That is an increase of 34.6% from the prior year or $430,855. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
I'm trying to, when we had back March or April, when we approved the emergency roofing and we had three facilities, what would the deductible look like with the new deductible we would have? What would the cost difference be?
That's a good question.
Just off the top of your head, I'm going to just like.
Well, it would be 2%. We really, when Mr. Lassiter and I looked at that, on our smaller elementary schools, I don't think it would be that much different. It's our larger schools, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number.
That's fine. So we would pay more in deductible if we had a larger facility here?
Absolutely, because it's 2% of the insured value, and you don't have that 500,000 per occurrence cap.
Right.
That is not there.
So would we want to encumber any money for this or would the general fund's healthy enough that that is our encumbrance?
Well, if you, that reserve that we just did previously, that eight, that we lowered, and I can't, sorry, I can't remember the dollar amounts, but that section for the construction or construction-related, that would definitely cover in that area. That would fit. Also, as a board, we could always come back to you and move some from land to that should we need to. So that's an area that could be covered under that reserve. You'd still have to do an amended budget to expend the funds, but it could be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I move to accept as presented.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Have a seat, Ms. Strauss. You earned it.
All right. That is going to take us to L one, executive session. The board will meet in executive session with its attorney by teleconference for a briefing regarding school health, safety protocols, and related legal issues. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the consultation with attorney, closed meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.071 and 551.129 of the Texas Government Code. So we will recess to executive session. And just in case y'all aren't here when we get back, to the staff and administrators, thank you so much for a great first day. Congratulations. We have seven trustees back in open session, and we are adjourned.